It's a one-time adjustment, but it's figured on two months. On hers, it actually started back in January. And as soon as she found out about it, she was making phone calls to contractors and stuff trying to figure out what was that and everything. So realistically, it's into the third month. And under the circumstances, I feel like it's fair to figure it on three months because she now will... I guess it's okay that I make the conflict's a reason why they did the temporary thing last week. So I didn't want to figure it till you guys said there, and now you can go ahead and figure it three months versus...
Make a motion for a grant, so we deal with the water adjustment for three months. All in favor? So we're up there.
No issues at all.
Streets?
Well, me and Scott were talking about that today. We need some more, if you're gonna use cold mix and just patch the holes, we need some new cold mix. If you wanna, we need a little more help if we're gonna do hot mix and a little bit better weather. We can patch some holes, but don't wanna do anything big until we use hot mix and do a permanent.
We know on second street, second, fifth, and 11th, and then from the rain and everything, it's a mess.
It's what?
It's a mess.
And up second north, where they fixed the alley and it's all the same.
Oh.
Same patch again.
Yeah, I cleaned up rocks and sand all over places. They was washing out everywhere.
Okay. Brian's not here?
You wanna check on getting a street sweeper for a couple of days and have him clean that.
Kind of problems that we use.
We can clean it up, but if the rains again hard, we can have the same mess all over again.
I know even there at the post office, there's a lot of sand grabbing right in the alley. Mary, what kind of sweep, sweep were you talking about? Talking about the money or catch it and pick it up at the same time, or just sweep it to the edge and then clean it up?
One that'll pick it up and catch it at the same time.
I'll see if I can look around and see if you get your price in there this week.
Yeah, do that. Brian's not here, so no fire out there?
Everything was pretty good, as far as I know. We had, they had a fund over there yesterday, bought in about $2.90, so...
Hold business? No business. The contract between the council and clerk.
You got a copy of it? Uh, did you get a copy of it?
Yeah, I got a copy. I don't like it. What's that? Cause I got a copy of it and I don't like it. Anything that would arise, we could take care of it. And of course, we don't know all our money. If we have to cut a couple of days off for one day here and there, and if you've got a contract, you can't do that. And then you're making a contract over to the state of what they can say. So I don't think we can do that legally. So if we have a problem coming up, take care of it. That's the way I look at it. But we gotta, we gotta get this money straightened out. How do you see it?
I think we need to get the money straightened out before we...
Before we do anything, yeah, I do too. But this isn't set in stone yet. Now, it can be adjusted.
No, it's not, it's not, not set in stone at this point in time. As long, and I'm satisfied with working at the money end of it, as long as there's some understanding just exactly what we're doing with regards to deducting money from Mr. Hall's pay and diverting it somewhere else. And one of the things that I had discussed with him is that if that's in fact the case and there's no, no real understanding that we can point to, my concern is that he, he gets taxed on the amount that he diverts to someone else. And that's not where we, where he wants to end up, and I don't think where we wanna end up either. But you know, if, the way it's set up right now is he's basically getting the money that he's entitled to under the salary ordinance, and then is gifting part of his money over to his utility clerk at this point in time to pay her salary. And could get crossways with the Internal Revenue Service and the State of Indiana on how that's taxed until we figure all this out.
Can we come back to this contract then, please just figure it out first?
He needs to work with Allison. So he'll get taxed somehow. I agree with that, but you have to give it to him and you, looks to me like. And then, that's okay.
I'll talk to you all about it after.
Okay.
Tell you what.
Yeah.
So I make a motion?
Can I make a motion to table the contract between the council and clerk?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trees bid for hollows. That's the trees you're going out of town on County Line Road, on the right, yeah.
So we gotta get you? We haven't been able to get you.
We have a vote.
Just wanted to make sure that you guys are okay with that.
Yep.
Cause a lot of it's gonna be there, the disdissemment, you gotta get rid of the tree.
Yeah, I make the motion to get rid of the tree.
One second.
So what do we do there?
All in favor, so?
Aye.
Uh, we're gonna get bids.
Yeah, we need to get...
We need to...
So maybe you'll be able to get...
Cause we're getting that, they're getting us a route way to get through there.
Yeah. And then another tree on County Street that's, done like sent you the picture and where it's collapsing in, that tree is a problem. And it's like this, it's planted on, so house, so you don't have to take it down.
Get somebody with a smoke filter gun.
Yes.
Aye. If you wanna drop it, you can.
I don't know. That's why they, when you go... Somebody else probably about it as well, it's, it's in town. Cause a problem with the, the meter.
On Third Street?
Yeah. Eighteen, Third Street. Perhaps you can have a discount on having...
Do you think we can get one for the five?
Yeah.
So we'll give it to one on Third Street if...
Also get a bid for the tree on Third Street?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Applications for superintendent. I have one application that they dropped off at the time. I don't know if anybody else has any?
Anybody advertise it anywhere or? I don't think so.
Word of mouth, word of mouth.
Okay, but you got somebody about an application that I guess could have...
No, I think we...
Yeah, yeah, you, wait on some other applications before we do anything.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Wait on applications for superintendent? Can I get a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye. So how long are you gonna take applications or you just gonna...
I don't know, I don't think. Fifteen days?
Yeah, sooner better.
Fifteen days? And the question has arisen in regards to who answers to who between Scott, Troy, and Wanda is going to give them work orders?
If that's what you want.
Yeah, I know, but if she's willing to give them work orders?
I love the captain service.
Needs to be someplace that everybody can call.
Right.
That's, that's the place to call.
Yeah.
She can tell us what's going on.
I've always done them, and then I scan them in and make sure they're in the database. Plus I keep binders of them, so any of you can look at them, and make sure everything's getting done, what, what you want done. So...
So Scott and I are just kinda equal when we just answer to you guys.
Yeah.
Something major that they can call, Mike, Major, blew it over at law.
Right.
And then, you know...
Is that okay with you, Donnie?
Is that okay to say?
Any motion?
We need a motion for that?
Yeah. Motion that Troy and Scott are trying to equal and then take the work orders from Wanda. Can I get a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
I'm gonna get up to something, she can call one of them.
Jan?
Hello, the beat. First of all, I wanna thank the board for letting us have the town yesterday for our interest pardon. I know Mike was there, he were at the restaurant, he, Ronnie was, or Ronnie was down to the thing, and the Hollis has opened up their building to us. So we did have, I think, a pretty successful event, so I hope you guys all did too, but we appreciate you letting us have the town board. So I just have a lot of questions that I think any of us as members sitting here should have the right to know. As we all know, rumors go quick in this town. If you put it on your Facebook, it said the best, let's go to the horses' mouth. So here I am to answer questions. Nothing against anybody setting this building, I just wanna know for my own, and maybe other people have questions here. I have a list, but I won't go over all of them.
Man, that's a big list.
It is, it is. I, and I think I asked this question to Mr. English before. What do we as a town have a right to know what our balances are in our accounts? Do you guys know at every meeting, do you have something that says this is how much we have in our checking account? How much we have in the savings account, how much money we have in CDs? I know as a treasurer for me every month at the DFW, I have to show that every month. Do you guys have something like that that we can come in and look at? I mean, how much do you have in your accounts right now? Erwin, do you know?
I don't know.
Marion, Mike, so Donnie's really the only one.
I don't even know.
You don't?
I haven't got solid bank statements from March yet.
But as of January, as of December 31st, would you know what I've got this way?
Oh yeah, and I know what January was and February, you guys got February's I think last month, so...
That's what I'm saying, do you get that every month?
Every month.
Every month.
So can we as a, if I wanna know how much, as of February 1st, what was in the account? Just, just out of curiosity, I keep hearing we don't have money, we don't have money. So I just think it's interesting to know that.
Should be able to get a copy of it.
Jan?
Well, I don't make counsel, I ask Donnie on a regular basis for appropriations list, what funds are for each account, streets, surroundings, roads, and about every quarter, I would get a funds list. That's why we have all the funds, CDs, all that, make a guess.
I just think it would be nice to know. And like, I know you guys get a substantial, I, I don't know how much reach you get from IU, but like, where does that money go? Does that get, go into certain fund, a maintenance fund or? I just think those are some questions that would be nice to know.
Have you stood up seven accounts, we used to have seven different accounts.
Yeah, nine I think now.
How many you got now?
Nine.
Nine. Nine different?
Okay.
Now, that's accounts.
Yeah.
It's not funds, we have a lot more funds than there is accounts.
And then you can only use certain...
Correct, I understand that, and you can only borrow certain money for certain funds, certain things, I get all that. And I know that's a hard job, I wouldn't want it, it's hard enough for me with the little nine, but if I wanted to say right now, how much do we have in the banking account?
I may be the one that has debt for the day.
Read the information out, post it on the bulletin board.
Don't, not really getting the answer to that, so then I wanna go...
So if you don't want to deny them what date you want, then...
Sure, I can do that, I have a problem with that, I just, just think it would be...
If you put March the 31st, as soon as I get the bank statements from March...
Yeah, and I understand you have to wait till we reconcile it, I have to do the same thing, I get that. I'm not questioning that, I just wondered if that was available.
But is the pub allowed to go in town hall and see it?
Well, they can't go through the doors and stuff.
No, I know.
It's public information.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna come in and go knock it in this door, but can I go and say, hey, Donnie, what's the, what do they have, and I can put our request in there for it.
We should be able to see them, just post them on the bulletin board. You come in and look at it and you know what your, what your answer is.
Um, and then I had a question, um, what's the difference, I guess, to Mr. English? I've heard there's been, and again, rumor mill, rumor mill, rumor mill. What's the definition of illegal meet, illegal meeting between board members?
Board members, anytime that they have two or more members of the town council are in a meeting, that's not a social meeting. That's a public meeting that should be advertised. If they meet an executive session, they can meet to discuss a number of items, including, among others, collective bargaining, personnel, a variety of different things. And that is not a public meeting. And has to be advertised as an executive session, and Mr. Hall has to keep minutes of that, and I have to prove minutes of that.
So two or more, do all three have to be there for that executive meeting?
No, two.
Just two?
Two out of the three have to be there, that constitutes a meeting. Now, if it's a, a social, social gathering, if they're not discussing town policy, then they can, they can meet and enjoy the eclipse if they choose to.
But what if they aren't talking town meeting, just the three two people?
Then that should be, I'm not sure that that's necessarily an illegal meeting, it may be a meeting in violation of the open door law, and to the, they cannot make any decisions at that particular meeting, anything that, can't vote, they can't do anything else. And if it is an illegal meeting, what you have to do is within 30 days of the date of that, you have to bring it to their attention, you have to file suit, and if some action was taken during that particular meeting, then it has to be done at a public session.
Okay, just, I'm just curious. Um, and then I was really confused about this utility clerk position. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I just had to watch. She, her job was, the, the utility clerk was...
Eliminated.
Eliminated, yeah, I can't think of the word, thank you. Um, because there was not enough money in the budget, that's what was stated, you don't have the money. How can you turn around in less than five minutes and all of a sudden have enough money for the deputy clerk?
I don't, my recollection is, is that it was not on Ernie's motion eliminated because we didn't have enough money. His motion was just to eliminate the position, eliminate the position as approved by the last town.
Then why was that eliminated? What was your excuse for wanting that job eliminated?
Well, one of them wants money, then if, if she's under him, he can, he runs the books, he runs the money, okay? And now he can turn around and if, say, we're getting a little short, we don't have money to pay her for five days, okay? Well, then he can say we're gonna work four days, or three days, we'll collect these three days. It's all up to him, so it's a lot better, the office goes better, everything's been better. And when, anyway, I, I think that's the way to go, that's the way it's always been, and it works good. We get her bills, we pay her bills, and she's still got her job.
I know, and, and I'm glad you did that, I'm not, I just don't understand how, you don't have any for one position.
There, there is a lot of different reasons, but that, that's the basic one of them. And that was, that was made out of spite anyway, that job was, okay? So...
Well, I don't believe that, I'm not gonna fight you on that.
Ain't gonna get no match over that.
I'm not, no, exactly right. It's kinda silly. But it just doesn't make sense to me, okay, that's all I'm saying, it doesn't make sense how you can have the money.
Originally, I had said three days.
Right.
And Donnie turned around and said that he would pay for one day.
Yes.
If the board paid for four days.
So how did you all of a sudden have four days worth of money to pay? And then you come in and say, did you work four days instead of the fifth day, so he didn't have to give up his time? You know, he's been there longer, maybe she should've gone to the four days. That's what I don't understand, you got enough to pay her?
We need one office.
Huh?
One day we don't have any money.
I know that.
We need one office, and regardless if you got two people, three people, but make a one office, okay, and that's what we've done.
But why should Donnie give up his day for her, nothing against you on that?
You love that, I can get it.
Off of it.
I know you did, but you didn't have the money to pay her for five days. Donnie graciously gave up one day, and then miraculously, now you have money for the fourth day. So to me, looks like you guys didn't want to be, have her underneath your jurisdiction, you wanted her under Donnie's. And that's fine, I'm just simply asking the question, that's what it looks like to me. Cause you don't have the money, all of a sudden we have the money, that's here there.
Wasn't, isn't Wanda at one time paid out of just the water?
Yes.
And now she can be paid out of another, since she's not just the water for ever again.
Yes.
I think that that was taken away a long time ago, her being paid out of the water tank. Because they know that other stuff costs too much.
Now she can be paid out of the town much as well.
Yeah, but again...
You don't have to come out of one fund.
Yes, but again, you have the money for, you did have the money for, for it under one position, but you have to...
Here's where you get into the different money.
We're not gonna agree on this, so it's okay, but this is questions I ask.
Yes, this is where her money can come out of the different ones, not this one fund, if it comes short, we still got a little money there.
So how are you gonna pay her?
You gotta, you gotta understand the books, okay?
I know, and I don't understand, that's why I'm asking the questions. So why could, do you not have paid her executive clerk under the same fund she's being paid now? I mean, there must be a reason why, I don't know.
There's not enough money in the water fund, and the sewer fund, and the wastewater fund to pay her for five days, maybe four days.
Okay.
And that's what we have to pay her at, as utility clerk.
So now you're paying her out of any fund you want?
No.
No, certain funds.
Certain funds.
Well, the $248.50 I might have missed, every pay that's coming out of my check will be coming out of the general fund. I can tell you that.
I'm just, why should you have to give up your day, seems like you need to be in there, it was nice of you to offer that.
I, but I don't have to be in there.
You know, but, yeah.
I don't have to be in there, you know, and honestly, I'm probably not there three days a week.
Yeah.
But I'm not an hourly employee, it's an elected position, and it's like, I guess basically I'm on salary. And, but, but that's the way it's always been, that's the way any elected official is.
So then my other question, I know Matt was fired because he didn't pass his test, is that correct?
No.
Why was that fired?
Not only that, I had asked him to do several things. He wouldn't do it, I asked him to get me signs, get me a price on the signs when we first took over. I went around town, and I saw how many signs we needed, where we needed them, didn't do it.
Didn't do nothing. Talking about street signs?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Art just said he didn't do anything, I was thinking, I've been working a lot, did you look at the work orders to see what he'd have been out there doing?
He also cost the town $700 because he, him and Scott went and took the test. It was originally $1,500 where he dug and busted a gas line.
Second time, two times.
Yeah, two times.
I don't think this is the place to...
No.
No.
Okay, that's fine with all of it.
It's personal matters that...
Okay, that's fine, I'll, I'll take out, I just, this is the rumor mill that's out there, and I'm just wanting to know. And then what, I mean, I'm sure you can explain this to me, why did we stop, stop giving police protection? I looked on the gateway, I looked, like a lot of our money went to the fire department, probably because they needed new buildings and upgrades, which I get. But why do we not get money for police anymore? Doesn't the state grant us so much money? Or, or is that not?
The state grants, you get so much money for the general fund. And if you went back 10 years ago, there was money in there for Marshall, and I think they had some money in there for Deputy Marshall at that time. But as the time went by, other things increased in prices, and it got to the point where you're gonna eliminate something. Because you can't afford the insurance, you can't afford to hire light bills, gas, oil, whatever. So eventually it was taken out of the budget for the Deputy Marshall and the Marshall. The previous board, if you recall, wanted to do this year's budget. So I asked them in a public meeting, are you gonna put fines in there for a Marshall, full-time, part-time, anytime? And their answer was, yes, we're gonna put money in there for Marshall for next year. They met eight days later, and there was not one cent put in for Marshall. Now, had they put money in for Marshall, they would've had to make cuts somewhere else, but the money's just not like it used to be years ago. Now, after saying all that, they raised the local income tax.
Yes.
And it was my understanding that that was supposed to be in like a savings or reserve account, that they was gonna build a new jail eventually. Well, a couple of years ago, they divvied it up, Town Spencer gets so much, Town of Gospel gets like $53,000 a year. And I don't think that the county is holding back any of that money for a new jail. So I think when it comes time to build a new jail, they're gonna hit us with another local income tax.
So the $53,000 you had to pay them? I'm confused.
We got that.
About fifty-three?
That's $53,000 a year that we didn't ask for, it was just a gift to us.
Okay.
So the previous board said, hey, we're gonna put 75% of that back for a new car station.
Okay.
That was like forty, right at $40,000, maybe $41,000. So that's been put back, and the other $15,000 is for public safety. So if they had a town marshal, they'd got $15,000 roughly, but it normally goes for the fire department, because just like the other day, anytime the fire department gets in any fits or needs to purchase something, it's not $200, $300.
Right, yes, I understand that.
There was a bill in here tonight for eight, $820 some dollars, that's just for radio, or batteries. Well, the radio was $5,000, right at $5,000.
That's free radio for the tanker, that's five, almost $5,000.
Is there grants that could be gotten to help them with this stuff? I mean, yes, we can fire department probably before the police, but is there grants that they can get to help get these radios?
They even applied for a van, and I think Larry even applied for radios, didn't he?
I, I felt that fell through, I think, but Motorola itself makes most of these radios. They have people out there dying to help you get a grant, and election poll. You get online classes on how to properly file for those grants, and Motorola's never given one. I don't know why they pay $5,000 for radio. You gotta apply for the grant first, even if you get part of it, it's about nothing. And that, that's in the name of that account for the fire there, we got that one and a half percent... We got that one and a half percent income tax increase on Owen County, uh, a year and a half, two years ago. Uh, when we started getting that, we decided, I thought we'd put that all in a file called Fire and Security.
No, it's called Public Safety Fund.
Okay, well, there's sheriff in there somewhere. Public safety, it's public safety fund, there's a sheriff in there somewhere. Marshal, but I thought we put it in Fire and Security.
Public Safety is the fund that is put in, and seventy-five percent of it has to be put back in. These guys can't even change that without going to court. Because the ordinance was made up that in order to change that, you gotta go to court and get judges.
Okay, I guess I don't understand that. So, at some point in time in the last town board, the town boardman before that, or the one before that, an ordinance was made that the money that we got from.
Hopefully not.
County for, would go to the, um, fire department.
Seventy-five percent goes to building fund.
For the fire.
And then the other twenty-five percent goes to whatever, basically whatever they need.
So once that was made, you know how many years ago that was?
Just two years ago.
Two years.
Just two years ago. So why didn't we have police before that? Same reason?
Yeah, because it got, it got siphoned off into other categories, like light bills, uh, gas bills, whatever, relating to the general fund. None, none of that has been pulled over to the water utility. And back many years ago, a lot of the water utility, if there was extra there, it got pulled in for expenses that shouldn't have been used for.
Yeah. Okay, you've answered some.
Be nice if we had a money tree in the backyard down there.
It would be nice one for everybody. We all could use that money tree right now. I don't know, everybody's been to get groceries lately.
I ain't mowing all the rip saving weed.
Huh?
Mowing all the saving weed, yeah.
Jan was talking about, back in the day, Donny told the board I was clerk. We read the minutes, and in, and at the end, they knew exactly what was in each account. I had to put it down there. You may have done that too, or remember, remember. But that way, if I knew what was going on. And I hate reading them, I can't read them minutes, but I do. And it, Jan?
Huh? Yeah, that's it. I just, I think I have a right to ask questions that I don't understand. Still don't understand some of the answers. I'll work it out tonight. I'll be at the four o'clock going, how did that work?
Larry?
Yes.
You're right.
Most of you know me. For those of you that don't, I'm Larry Norman. I'm commended, on a campaign for, to be the, our Republican precinct committee man for Wayne One Township, at this township. And, uh, my goal is, I would like to bring some vibrant to the Republican Party around here, some excitement. Get some younger people interested in getting here, because, uh, most of us boomers are going away. We had to get some young ones, trying to get some kind of excitement going to the party. Uh, my opponent there, she's had the position since nineteen seventy. That's, that's, that's hell of a job. But I, I, I'm gonna get in there and provide a good trainer. I'm really good with people. I'd like to get, see if I can get some younger people turned in here, and, uh, really excited about improving this town, continual improvement of this town. Got a lot of ideas, we had a lot going. We started building, we built that water plant, I put three years of my life in. Now, we get the streets started, the mains, we're gonna start replacing them. Everybody that hates their water, which is almost everybody in town, is gonna have pristine water by the end of this year. That new filter starts tomorrow. Uh, stainless steel filter, it's gonna filter out everything but the water itself. And, uh, the streets are gonna get taken care of, I've got seven blocks of asphalt scheduled for June. We gave the guys plenty of time for the pipes. Uh, seven blocks of new asphalt, over a mill an inch and a half up the street, I got that program approved, they're heading up before I quit, for my tournament house. And then they're gonna put a new seal down and lay an internet, a brand new asphalt on that, everywhere they're doing it. There's a new main industry in our original, we don't have to dig it up. And, uh, we got a lot of other things going, uh, it's, it's gonna be exciting around this town. Lot of stuff going on. And everybody's home who has an old lead or galvanized service line, I got that worded into that two million dollar grant. They get a new line and a meter to their house, that's no cost to the homeowner. So that's a three thousand dollar job anymore, or more. So, that's all free now. Not free, it's forgiven and granted. And then, we made out, like I said, it's, uh, after all the work, we, this black past council put in. Over three million dollars free money to this town, and, uh, the loan for the rest of it, we need, is gonna be zero, just finance, with the state of the problem. It'll be better now, we're playing with the house of money. And I have plans to keep going at that, and fire department, I can get, uh, back there, there's one grant, here you go. I found a secret.
I know you.
Lexa Paul is what it is, that, uh, there is, I have people that call me still since I quit that, asking, why do you get in the middle of that? Was it what's working? Well, we did a math, you may have learned, they're dying, they, everybody ought to have a fire, pristine fire department. Motorola's dying, they're radios, boy. That's not in my job, that's their job, but I can help them out with that, because I found out I'm pretty good at. That's it. I will be precinct committee man, live up the Republican Party around here. I need to vote, I appreciate it.
Thank you for asking.
Can I ask one more question? Um, so I know we're gonna do superintendent, and you guys just talked about spending on hope. Do you have to publicize that?
Yes.
And then my other question, I know Troy works twenty hours, twenty-five hours?
Pretty much whatever I want.
But I thought you weren't supposed to go over a certain amount?
No, I think that changed.
Oh, that was three.
Yeah.
Okay, so now you can work as many hours as you want?
Pretty much, unless they tell me not to.
And the same with Scott?
He doesn't even come in tomorrow, so I have to be here.
Yeah, so what is his hour? I'm just asking, because I don't know.
Generally, I think he works one.
Twenty-four hours a week.
Eight to the two, something like that, but he has to take his daughter's rest.
So, because I'm stupid, so when you, we start all this road changes and putting the pipes, do they have, buying them and?
Banjo.
Yeah, do they come in and do all that work? Do our people do some of that work? How, who does that work?
The grant people.
The grant?
That was all bid on, all was shot.
So we got specific contractors, kind of, yeah. That's, that was, I wasn't sure. Who's the contractors? Is it?
B and T, is that the name of them?
Yeah. The guys that do the service lines, the house meter, that, that's all they do, it's all right, and what we do is, they're real professionals.
So our guys don't have to be a part of that, because we'll need them for other things.
We couldn't do that.
Well, that's what I assumed, but I didn't know, that's why I'm asking.
We're gonna probably bust up some sidewalks when it's over, and dig some yards, and I'm sorry, the flower bed's in the way, it's in the way.
There's two days a week that he leaves it two. And then the other days, he leaves it four. But right now.
So that's not gonna change those hours right now? We still have pretty much coverage between Troy and him, till four.
But right now, his daughter has pink eyes.
But I just felt one time Troy was on part-time, the other was part-time, and I'm like, are we gonna have enough time until you get your new utility? God forbid, we have a big break or something.
Yeah, they'll have, those guys can take care of it. But, uh, the contractors have a big for this job, and they try, we got an extra half million on court.
Well, that's what I just wondered.
Throwing on our grant for free, because it isn't so high.
And I come in sometimes if they need me.
Yeah, I know, you've been good about coming in and helping a lot.
I'm hoping those guys come in with the mains and do horizontal drilling.
I know, you can do it, because you're such a good person.
If we get lucky, those.
Well, it's good of you, thank you for doing that.
If we get lucky, those guys on the mains can do horizontal drilling, and we don't have to tear streets up. They drill a lot alongside the oil pipe.
Okay. Viola, would you want to tell something?
Well, the only thing I wanna say is, he keeps talking about if he would like to precinct person, what he can do for the town. The only thing a precinct person has with the town, and when he was voted on the town board, the two precinct people voted him on at a caucus. That's what we do. Other than that, he has no control over the town as a precinct person. And when Mike Miller went on the board, he was voted on at a caucus by myself and the Wayne Two precinct person.
I downloaded the manual for the position and read it three times.
That's fine.
I can't do things for the town, I can assist with, uh, write grant writing and stuff like that.
But you don't do that as a precinct person?
No, but I, I said, I wanna live it up, party, try and bring some young blood in, because we ain't getting no younger.
That's fine.
That's my goal, build a party.
Ryan, do you have any fire update?
Radio's out, eight hundred meter of radios out in the tanker. I ordered a new one, that's forty-nine hundred bucks to replace it. And thanks to Ronnie, that helps us pull forecast, we do a force, got three point.
You did a good job.
Yeah, I was like, uh, you need a stand, you need a shot.
No. Just say that to her and see what happens. I just like to be that. I asked for, we're still talking about superintendent, but we did it.
We're gonna get an ad, put in the paper, and we'll post it. All right. Can I give him one second to turn this in?
I wanna talk to Brian, and I think I might be coming back since they got rid of four zero one. And so, if he wants me, if not, fine. So, let you know. Because my problem is going. So, it might be a more weight share.
Let us know. Yeah, I'm just gonna make, make a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?